Thank you. Okay, so, uh, first order of business here, uh, you should have a set of draft minutes from the public hearing and our regular meeting of April 17th. I'd like a motion to approve these minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion's carried. Our next item are the bills. You all should have had some time to look at both if not. Uh, we'll look at them during the discussion. So, I have a motion to pay, approve and pay the bill. First of all, excuse me, I haven't had to tell you. Addition and deletion?
No.
Thank you, sorry. A motion to pay and approve the bill?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion's carried. Okay, Madam Clerk, we have some court funds?
We do. We have a letter from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 912. Uh, the American Legion Auxiliary of Rousas Point is requesting the Village of Rousas Point to grant us permission to distribute poppies for donations. These poppies will be made available at various locations throughout the village during the month of May. Therefore, your timely response would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your cooperation concerning this matter. Sincerely, Sue Bejar.
Okay, so, we've got a request from, uh, the American Legion Auxiliary to sell poppies in the Village of Rousas Point. Good to hear. I think I'm going to take a motion to-
Right, move for approval.
Move for approvals?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, has been notified, Ms. Bejar, that that's been approved. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, next item is a resolution, dormitory authority state municipal program grant. This is a secret resolution for our water plant. It's resolution 2017-21. Uh, whereas the Village of Rousas Point, herein called the Village, has undertaken a review and consideration of certain maintenance and improvements to the village's water treatment plant, and whereas the village has pending dormitory authority state and municipal facilities program grant funding proportions of such improvement, and whereas the village wishes to identify said maintenance activities and improvements and render a determination relative thereto in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation promulgated thereunder, whereas the improvements are type-two actions pursuant to six NYCRR, section 617.5C1, and therefore be resolved, the billboard has determined that the maintenance activities and improvements being an action under secret is a type-two action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and will not have any impact on the environment. It further resolve this resolution shall take effect immediately following this roll call vote. Could I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Make a motion to accept the motion, the resolution?
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? This is for the $200,000 that we have from setting the village office. That's the grant funding for that. Okay, uh, roll call vote. Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Baffa?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. Resolution's carried. The next item, the water rates resolution 217-20. Whereas the village, excuse me, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rousas Point deems it necessary to amend the water rates to reflect current water department operation as follows, effective June 1, 2017. Industrial rate, forty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars plus forty-five cents per thousand gallons. Monthly metered rate, forty-eight dollars plus fifty-five cents per thousand gallons consumed. Monthly flat rate, forty-eight dollars per month. Outside the village, monthly double the above rates. Um, the industrial rate is defined for use expected over one million gallons a month, and each industrial customer shall have an individually determined rate. The metered rate shall be any business or commercial enterprise expected to use over five thousand gallons in any one month and less than one million gallons, and the flat rate shall include each household, whether a partner unit, mobile home, or private residence. Any commercial or business unit expected to use less than five thousand gallons per month shall be charged the flat rate. In any event, if the expected use cannot be readily estimated, the business shall be metered and shall be subject to the industrial rate or the metered rate depending on actual use. This shall be the rules and regulations including responsibility for payment, penalties for delinquent bills, and collection of unpaid bills are established under section 11822 of the Water Code for the Village of Rousas Point. I'd like a motion to, uh, accept this resolution.
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
On second?
On second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, I guess we better put this to a roll call vote. My mistake. I don't know, it seems to be asked by the last. Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Baffa?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's carried. All guys, let it mix up. Okay, uh, according to the regulations, we have to have a public hearing to amend the sewer rates for 2017-2018. We didn't have to have one for the water rates. Uh, and I inquired why, and our treasurer was good enough to fill me in. Originally, uh, we had to change, enact a local law to change the sewer rates. Subsequently, it was, regulations were meant to allow us to do it by resolution, however, they still require us to have a public hearing. So, uh, I would suggest we have the public hearing prior to our next meeting, seven o'clock, beginning of the regular meeting, for questions regarding the upcoming sewer rates for 2017-2018. Is that okay with you guys?
Yep.
We're all right with that? Okay, so, we'll schedule-
When are we going to do it?
Four.
Just before, six forty-five?
We'll do it at seven o'clock. It shouldn't take too long.
You can do it, you can schedule it in the meeting, like, during the public, you know-
We're going to start, right? That's going to be the first thing, is open a public meeting, public hearing, hold a public hearing, then open regular meeting. Yeah? Okay? Great.
Do you need a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise for the public hearing?
Okay.
Do you need that?
Uh, you want to make that motion?
I will.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Your motion's carried, thank you. Uh, we're fortunate enough to have a, uh, a village resident step forward and accept an appointment to the planning board, and that would be Richard Dick Baker. Uh, so, I would like a motion approving him as a member of the new planning board. That's Mr. Richard Dick Baker.
I make a motion to accept Richard Dick Baker as a board member for the-
Planning board.
Planning board.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, the next thing is, uh, a proposed, uh, use of village property policy. There's been some ambiguity, both on a part of labor and management regarding this issue, and, uh, the, the verdict from this came from New York Council of Manners, and, uh, we'll just go through it real quickly. Pursuant to the provisions of section 86, the General Municipal Law and Board of Trustees of the Village of Rousas Point recognizes that there are rules of ethical conduct for public officers, employees, and volunteers which must be observed if a high degree of moral conduct is being obtained and in public confidence is to be maintained in our unit of local government. This rule of ethical conduct, as adopted, shall not conflict with, but shall be in addition to the Code of Ethics, chapter seven of the Code of the Village of Rousas Point. Compliance to this policy is mandatory for all employees and representatives of the village. Every officer, employee, appointee, or representative of the Village of Rousas Point shall be subject to and abide by the following standard of conduct: use of village property. No officer, employee, appointee, or representative of the Village of Rousas Point shall use or permit the use of village property, including land, vehicles, equipment, materials, and any other property for personal convenience or profit, except when such use is available to citizens of the village generally or as provided as a matter of policy. This policy formally prohibits, prohibits anyone from, among other things, completing personal projects at work, washing cars at work, or using village equipment to make repairs to personal property. It is the policy of the Village of Rousas Point to ensure employees and employees are responsible for reading, understanding, and signing the Village of Rousas Point use of village property policy. So, I would like a motion that we adopt this, uh, as a adjunct to our Code of Ethics, that will remove any question about what people can do and cannot do. You cannot use village property for any personal project, washing their cars, fixing their cars, borrowing equipment to do work at home. It, it makes it, makes it crystal clear. Could I have a, uh, motion?
Make a motion that we adopt the-
The use of village property policy.
Use of village property policy.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, once in a while, like, if I cut some brush for, uh, like, a couple people that I do their lawns or cubs and stuff like that, and I bring it up, instead of putting it outside the road for village cleanup, I bring it to the aisle itself. Am I allowed to do that?
Uh-
Yeah, because you're just acting on behalf of the rest of it.
Yeah. If, if you were going to go up there and use the chipper yourself-
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm not-
You don't use it in your-
Like, bringing a brush or whatever-
You're bringing it the same place that, that the village brings it.
Right, yeah.
Can every citizen in the village do that?
Yes.
They can, uh-
They can't bring grass and leaves or something?
Yes, yes, they can bring grass and leaves, but they can't bring brush.
Oh.
That's the test of this thing. That's what it says, where it says-
Okay.
No, and I'm not trying to, you know, I know you're trying to just get it great.
Right.
The way they word it is, it has to be available to all citizens of the village. If everybody can use, like, use something or do something than any employee, representative, elected official can, but if not everybody can do it, you can't.
I agree with you.
And we're just trying to help out.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's a commercial, it's a commercial venture on your part, and so if we had, you know, if somebody came into town, cut down trees, had a bunch of brush, bring it up to our brush pile, you can't do it.
Okay.
Your intentions are honorable.
Like I said, I, I don't do it often. Once in a while, I, you know-
Well, I think it's a good question, and I think that's exactly what this takes care of.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it up.
All right.
More discussions. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that policy will be adopted and distributed to employees. Finally, uh, for my fortune, we have a resolution with proxy, and, whereas a Board of Trustees of the Village of Rousas Point, New York, is a municipal member of NIPA, which is New York Municipal Power Agency, and whereas in accordance with the bylaws of the NIPA, each municipal member may cast one vote on each transaction properly before this meeting. It will therefore be resolved if the NIPA Board of Directors be and is hereby designated as the credit delegate for the Village of Rousas Point, New York. Could I have a motion to accept this resolution, to, uh, use this proxy vote at the next meeting?
So moved.
On second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Baffa?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Yeah, I'll turn this over to, uh, Trustee Arnold.
Uh, yes, uh, I'd like to talk about the painting of the Civic Center.
Okay, what would you like to talk about?
I don't think, uh-
If we're going to talk about individual employees, we're going to have to do that in the executive session. Do you want to talk generally about it?
We'll talk generally about it, right? Don't mention names. Yeah. Uh, I think we ought to look into how, how we're going to take and do this. You know, if we're going to use, uh, staging, or if we're going to use, uh, the, the gale or whatever and stuff like that, I don't think we ought to use the gale, because I think it's going to be a pretty tough shade when we're done.
Okay, what, would you like to hear what the plan is?
Yeah.
Okay. So, about two years ago, the village board decided, like, see the south side in front of the Civic Center painted. Uh, they bought a paint sprayer at that time for about $500. Um, there were two options. Their best result, the building was, according to the manufacturer, the paint, the building should be pressure washed first, and then there was two options, either prime the entire building and then paint it, or do two coats of paint. And it should take around sixteen gallons of primer and paint to do it. Uh, they had, they proc, they procured this locally at a, at a very good price. Um, the gale, uh, will be used as a post for renting a lift. It'll be covered with plastic sheeting or drop cloth, whatever's necessary to ensure there's no paint sprayed over onto the gale. The gale was used, uh, by the electric department last year to paint all of the trim, like, both the library. Uh, we have people available to operate the gale. The individual that'll be running the sprayer has experience using a power sprayer, both at a, a commercial enterprise in Placerville and has used it here locally. Uh, and there will not be any painting on windy days, of course, any chance of rain. We have a four-year, forty-year-old building that's going to get a relatively cheap maintenance facelift, and it's not just being done haphazardly, where it's going to just go up to start spraying and the spray's going to go all over.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I, I don't think, you know-
They've got a, they've got a, like, as far as the gale goes, it's going to be covered, and the individual doing the spraying has experience using that equipment.
Who's going to run the gale? Do they have experience running the gale?
Yes, we have some. And again, well, we do. It's a, it's a-
Okay.
Certified operator.
All right.
I mean, and, and we have an executive session tonight to discuss, uh-
Personal-
The employment history of a particular individual, and we could, I can give you details about particular individuals that will be doing that.
Okay. I'd just like to add that we need to be very, very careful when we're spraying outside, because just, I don't know, maybe ten, fifteen years ago-
Twenty years.
Wyatt had a professional guy come and do some painting outside, and he ended up with about fifteen cars overspray on it, and you have a whole pile of boats, and Wyatt ended up-
They don't say that.
Polishing all the cars and getting the paint off.
Along with my car.
Right.
And I was a long ways away from Wyatt.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's what I'm saying, is we need to be very careful.
They plan on-
And that was a professional group, so-
Yeah.
If you're doing it with, I understand you may have some experience, whoever's doing it, but these were professionals, and this still happens, so we need to be very, very careful, especially with millions of dollars of boats on the side of us over here that we're going to be-
You're hoping that, that we're going to be able to wait until most of those boats have been launched, which they usually are in summer. But again, we'll give, give you more specific detail on it.
Okay.
And I, I think it's a very valid point. I know anything that you guys are, any objections or concerns you have is simply, you know, concern about the village is genuine. It's not about anything individual, so I-
No, 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 no.
I think it's a, I think it's a fair question, and I think it's a-
Because it costs them some money to-
Big money.
We're not going to be-
To do, to fix those cars.
We're going to see that that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
That doesn't happen.
All right, uh, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to get a month's report on the IED money, stuff if I possibly can.
You can do that.
Okay. And also, uh, the docks that's behind, uh, the village office. They haven't been used in a couple years by the Sheriff's Department, and I'd like to see if the village crew can take and put them down to the dock, down to the, it's where, down by the-
Village boat ramp.
Village boat ramp, yeah.
Unfortunately, uh, those docks are there under a memorandum of understanding of board, so the board control owns those docks. We signed the, uh, we signed the memorandum of understanding with them on-
Really? The village, I thought the village owned them.
No, you're wrong. Six, ten, 2010. Uh, I can read you the terms.
No, no, well, that's actually- Did they buy them?
Whom? The, the Board of Control.
They bought it? I didn't know that. Me neither.
There you go.
Now, we-
It's found out.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Okay.
And I'm thinking that the sheriff is probably going to use them this summer. I'm pretty sure the sheriff is, well, I haven't told.
Okay.
But the board control, as part of the memorandum of understanding, allow them to-
Well, but then, we ought to do something with our boat dock down here, because one of them, the thing is broke. It wore a hole in the bottom when the water was really low.
The boats?
The boats, and it needs repairing, because it's, it's way down in the water.
We can-
The first one.
Hey, the farthest east?
No, it'd be the one by the shore, I think.
Farthest west?
Yeah, the one by the shore.
Okay. So, if it's, if it's a float is, is broken, we can, we can purchase those floats. They're not very expensive. Is that what the, are you aware of what it is, Mr. Palfey?
I think it's the first ten-foot piece of dock.
So, it's, the float underneath it has been compromised and it's sunk?
Yeah, I think it wore a hole in it, and its air sections, I think the first, uh-
I think it's super dock.
Yeah, I think the first five-foot piece has a hole in it.
Again, um, I know that Barkum Marina does, does order them, as well as Gaines Marina, they both do, so I think we could probably get a quote for a single float from each one of them. It's not very hard to, to put them in.
Yeah, okay.
Four boats to take them.
Well, why don't we ask for a quote for the next meeting, and we'll prove or get the next board meeting to buy one.
Well, I, I, for the price, uh, for the cost, we don't need to put it out to bid or anything.
No, no, I'm just saying for the board to prove it on budget, and I would just get a, get a cost estimate and- Okay, I can do that.
Okay, you want to check with those two?
Yep.
Those two sites, I think they probably be the best, and-
Yep.
They may point you to, uh, somewhere further out, okay?
Yep, sounds good.
All right.
All right, and, uh, I talked to Susan at the library today, and the reason why that they changed the locks on the doors, because they had twelve keys out, and over the years and stuff, and they had no idea where they were, and she got in contact with, I think, seven of them, and out of the seven, she said five of them didn't know where the keys were, or they turned them in, or whatever, or something like that.
Security issue, this is a security issue, one of them.
Right, yeah. So, she talked to third board, the, the library board, and the library board said change the locks and stuff like that. But, uh, and I guess, uh, Mr. Palfey's got a key anyhow that fits it?
Or-
Library?
Yeah, we all did.
Yeah, well, if it's the same ones, they changed the tumblers in there, so I don't know if, if your key fits or my key fits or not.
They do.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay, alloy key?
Yeah, the fire department's key, stuff like that, so. She said she's pretty sure that they all fit, so.
Well, my question, where I brought it up last week, was not to question why they changed them or if they could change them. I would just question the, the cost of it.
Came from their budget.
It was like five hundred bucks for two locks, I thought was kind of steep.
Library board decided to do it, and they had the authority to do that.
And if they had the money in their budget, so.
They did.
Yep, they did. So, mine?
No complaints, so.
All right.
Fair question.
Yep, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Trustee Dart, do you have something?
Yeah, a couple things. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, Trustee Baffa advised us that, uh, what we had seen when we did a recent visit to sewer plant, where they've got approximately ten, uh, life rings within a solid amount of rope hanging around this, this one, uh, slurry tank, I guess, where the main sledge comes in and is agitated, and before it goes on to the next process. This is an area where if you fell in the water, it's almost zero oxygen, and you'd probably die right off. Um, spoke with Mr. Graves, and he indicated you'd probably do five under this year's budget and five under next year's budget, and he had said he already had spoken with our treasurer, which I'm going to ask now, about these life rings, as he spoke about to you about taking, uh, finding money for these under this year's budget?
Yes, yeah. We're in transfer money, yeah.
Okay, we're all set.
Yeah.
Okay. We've got two, we've got two bid prices in. Uh, one's from Barkum, Barkum's Marina, and one is from, uh, Marisars, it's a company, I guess, that the security is in his business with. Barkum's came in, it's a twenty-four-inch life ring with a rope bag and fifty-foot rope, uh, one hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. We get five, that's five hundred thirty-seven fifty. From Marisars, it's a twenty-four-inch life ring with a rope bag and sixty feet of rope, a hundred and fifteen dollars apiece, times five is five seventy-five. The only difference that they're stating here is the length of the rope, and I don't think ten feet really makes a difference, so, uh, we have our choice with these bids. Five thirty-eight for Barkum's and five seventy-five for Marisars.
What's your recommendation, Trustee Dart?
My recommendation would be the, uh, the five thirty-eight from Barkum, since it's a local business and it appears to be the identical product that the other ones are.
So, you make that motion that we purchase?
I'll make, I'll make that motion that we purchase.
Uh, that's a question?
Sure.
And do these, do these have to stay outside?
Yes.
They do have to stay outside.
Yes, they're hung right to the side.
Oh, I know, I see they're, they're hung right to the side. I see them for years and stuff like that up there, but, I mean, the preserve them-
That's what they're made for, is be outside.
Oh, okay.
You know, and you're like hanging out the bow or hanging out the dock or-
Because they got to be ready for instance, you, so you wait two minutes-
Somebody falls in the oxygenation tank-
No, I'm just saying-
And run and get it, they're dead when you get back.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if, if you went out there with, with the life raft, when you go out to, to change the agitator and stuff like that.
No, they're, they're designed, from what I researched, they were designed to be stored outside.
And we never bought them in the beginning, so I guess apparently they've been out there for thirty years.
Sounds like they say they're wild.
I, I was, I was told that the originals that came with, uh, when they built that twenty-three years ago.
Eighty-six, yeah. So, it would be eighty-six, I'm thirty-one years old, and it's five hundred dollars in development.
Thirty years.
Okay, so, Trustee Dart's made a motion that we-
I'll second that.
Buy them at the one hundred and seventy-five apiece?
Yes, for Barkum.
Seconded by, uh, Trustee Baffa. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I will purchase both. Anything else, trustee Dart?
Uh, yeah, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Graves concerning his schedule, since I'm a new trustee, uh, to that facility, and um, he's been keeping me up to date on what they've been doing. One, one thing that I caught on this week, uh, that is, they're starting to work on these inserts that go in the, uh, storm drains. It's, and it catches, actually catches the water and, and it funnels it differently than if they went directly in there and directly into our sewer. I asked him, after they go through all that trouble, and they're, they've pulled the cover, and they're inspecting the insert, if they do the inspection of the manhole, these, itself, not gaining down, just do a visual, see if his bricks are loose, see if, you know, is there any problem with the ring on the top? And then make, uh, donations for us. And he's, he said he would. We'd have to, uh, uh, I'd have to talk with him at a later date with the work that he finds and who's gonna do this work.
All right, I will look forward to hearing about that.
It's a radio.
Yeah, and that's it for me.
Okay, um, trustee Dart?
Well, I have nothing.
What's your answer?
Um, the only thing I have is I'd like to bring up to the board's attention and comment is uh, about raising the speed limit back to thirty miles an hour village-wide. I found out, I, I checked today and I talked to the police chief. Uh, every street in the village is twenty-five miles an hour, except where there are school zones or, which would of course stay the same. And one section of Academy Street at the, at the west end is thirty. And the only other streets that are thirty are state highways.
So Lake Street, Crotte Street?
Those are state highways, so they're thirty. Everything else is twenty-five. And I think that we ought to have it uniformly to be thirty, um, for a variety of reasons. Uh, he also indicated that there are very, very few traffic accidents in this village. Uh, the primary ones are up on, near Stewart's and that corner, because it's the highest traffic area there is, and those are coincidentally state highways anyway. So, that's what I'd like to do is, uh, I guess ask the mayor to kinda poll the board and see what the sense is of the board for doing this, and if so, then uh, begin the motions to get this in the works. We have to, we have to have our attorney look into it, we have to have public hearing. There's a whole procedure you have to do to change the village code. But, uh, that's what I'd like to see is get the ball rolling on it, because it'll take a couple of months if we do it.
Uh, I guess you could, you could make a motion that we, uh, begin the process to amend the village code to make a uniform speed limit in the village of Rouse Point of thirty miles an hour. Is that what you wanna do?
Yes. Well, I'll make a motion, second, then we'll discuss it.
Right.
Come on, go with us, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, discussion, uh, your thoughts on that?
I think it's a good idea, I mean.
Okay.
Twenty signs are involved here, since we probably do have the thirty mile an hour sign playing around.
Oh, obviously, it must be fifty. I don't know if there's that many, but there's much, but.
Well, I'm sure.
Well, once you have it a uniform, though, you can have practically one sign, the village speed limit. You don't have to post each individual street when they're all the same, I don't think so.
To tell you the truth, I never knew it was down to twenty-five.
Yeah, well, where have you got stopped?
Montgomery Street.
True, but I mean, I haven't seen.
You know, and I knew Ed's water was twenty-five. Uh, I wasn't aware that, like, State Street, Chapman Street are twenty-five miles, not posted that way.
Yeah.
The only place it's posted twenty-five is Montgomery and.
There's more, there's, there's four or five more signs that I saw.
Yeah, I haven't seen them sold.
Because I wasn't looking after, we talked about it.
Well, the, the motion in the second is, is as he said, to begin the process, look in this, the first thing would be to, uh, have the administrator contact our attorney, uh, uh, and see what, uh, what he has on that, and as far as if there's any, uh, state regulations which may affect that. And, you know, we, we'll need their legal opinion first, and then, you know, make the next step.
I think, I think probably the easiest way for him to do it is he's gonna say to just rescind the law that changed it to twenty-five, and then.
Well, let's, let's let him.
And then to do it, make that a public hearing and all that stuff.
See what the lawyers say. So, that's the motion that, uh, we start that process, and the first thing would be to have the administrator contact the board with that question, so. Uh, I guess by roll call, trustee Arno?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
No.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Vata?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion carried.
I have two other things, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll open it back up to trustee Arno.
Uh, we got our light pole in today, and I'll have, uh, come into the clerk's office and stuff, and we'll have it give to Mr. Palky to see.
This is for the.
For the repair room station.
Welcome Center?
Welcome Center. And, uh, if Mr. Palky can take and put it in at his leisure, you don't have to hurry, because they don't open up till May or June, so.
We're in May.
Yeah.
It's May first, happy May day.
So, and also, I'd like to see if the villi, is there a law in the village that says that people that break sidewalks, uh, like heavy trucks back over them or whatever, are they liable to pay for them, the residents, or the village just goes fixing them after?
Just we'll have to look at the code.
It is, right.
Code enforcement officer may have some information on that, Mr. Sterling?
It, it is in your local codes on the sidewalks and streets, that if a contractor or a construction worker damages the property, then they are responsible for it.
We should start looking into this, uh, because there are some places I.
You had some complaints?
Yes. Yes.
So, I think you should make, make referrals to our code enforcement officer when it happens, and he can investigate.
Okay. Yeah.
So we know, we know the answer, you're liable to why it's not, so I would say go that.
Yeah, because, uh, there's quite a few places I noticed when I walked and stuff that where a new house was built, or something, or whatever, or somebody did something to their house, and they backed over the sidewalk and broke the, the sidewalk and stuff, and some places got, one place got twenty-two blocks that's broken, and they weren't there before the house was built.
Yeah. Again, you know, I mean, you, I'm sure, were well aware that proving something, you know, that they, that that happened before is, is really difficult. Photos, things like that, that was like that, you know, I mean, you've heard the story.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, and I'm sure our CEO can share that with you, it's, uh, it could be the same thing, but certainly if you have a suspicion, I would ask a complaint to him, and he'll, he will take over.
Okay.
For me.
You know, I, I think, mayor, generally the code officer does a site inspection before somebody breaks ground, right? You go check it out to see for zoning and all that, if it's.
Well, we're talking if you get a load of soil, we're not, we're not talking about building a house. We're talking about any, any.
Right, hasn't.
I mean, so, there's gonna be a building permit issue, yeah.
Well, most of it's the big stuff with the cement mixers, I would think, is the heavy kind that breaks something.
Given dump trucks and stuff like that, yeah.
Stolen or whatever.
So, if you're aware of it, pass that, pass that along, that's good.
All right.
Okay, uh, other, other reports, we have our administrator, has a couple of reports for us. Their report, uh, draft policy for sick leave bank.
Uh, there was a request made or suggestion that the non-union staff should establish a sick leave bank policy similar to the policy currently in the collective bargaining agreement for union membership. So, the policy has been drafted up, everyone has received a copy of the policy.
You all have copies of the policy?
Would you like me to read it?
I'll have one.
You might have sent it by email. You need to get it out, make sure to get it, so for, we'll do that, get that to box, so for the next meeting, we can
Okay.
Have a chance to look at it, and then, uh, we could vote on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next item you have is on inflow and infiltration of wastewater plants.
I do. I met with, um, with Chief Graves and operators Ernie Barkum and Dan Gay, and ran through some of their files and realized that the problem with the, um, inflow and infiltration is a longstanding issue. Um, questions, not questions, but examples of inflow sources were cited as roof drain, downspouts, foundation drains, basement drains, or some pumps leaking manhole covers, storm drain cross connections. Uh, examples of infiltration sources were leaking manholes, holes, cracks, joints, failures, and faulty connections in sewer piping. Uh, problems that were cited historically for the I N I were, um, causing backup into homes and businesses, um, environmental or health hazard spills for overflows. Increases, as someone mentioned here, in the, um, the volume of wastewater being pumped into the pump stations, um, causing electricity spikes and depreciation of equipment. Uh, it was given a cost estimate to be about ten thousand dollars every few years, as an example. In two thousand and sixteen, the cost for the electricity was nineteen hundred and twenty dollars. That was an estimate for the increased electric from the I N I. Uh, potential limits, potentially limits the amount of capacity for future expansion within the village. Um, the steps that were taken for reducing the exposure to I N I started back in the nineteen nineties. And most recently in two thousand, and, yeah, two thousand and eleven, um, smoke testing has been done, identifying cracked pipes, manholes, illegal hookups. And some of the problems we recognized through the contents of the files were that some of them have been fixed, others are yet to be fixed. Um, and obviously, I would say that there are many that we do not know whether they have been fixed or have not, because there were no responses in the files. Um, some manholes have been rehabilitated or replaced, there's a report on that. Um, building inspections were conducted in the nineties. Oh, that has to do with the, the some pumps. Periodic reminders have been published in the local newspapers, letters have, um, gone out. Um, video inspections of sewer mains have been done to determine which need to be fixed or replaced, with some of those having been addressed. There's a schedule of those areas. Newer piping has been installed on some streets, there's also a schedule listing the work that had been done. And some piping has been rewined, all of these things are documented. So, that is some of the history, um, I guess the board will need to consider those items. I have the documentation as far as the streets and so on and so forth, if you'd like to take a look at that, and decide how you would like to move forward as far as on repairs, on, on the smoke testing again, and other activities pertaining to the I N I.
So, we don't, we don't know exactly how many, I mean, were there like thirty houses identified, and ten of them were remediated? Or was there anything like that, or, there wasn't anything?
There was one letter advising the village that they had remediated the issue. Um, there were twenty, maybe twenty letters total over the years with no documentation in those particular files at wastewater that indicated, confirmed without a doubt that they had addressed the issues.
Now, Mr. Barkum's been up there for quite a while, did he find that this was an overabundance this year, or was it pretty much normal, because every spring it happens?
Well, since the nineteen nineties, at that point in time, it started to be documented, it's apparently periodically a significant problem.
Every spring? Mon amour now?
I don't know that it is typically spring, um, or, you know, defined to any particular point in the year. It could happen if we have torrential downpours in the summer. It could happen, um, when the ground is either saturated or excessively dry, and we have those torrential downpours. The storm, the hurricanes that, I mean, they don't obviously come through here very frequently, thank goodness. Um, that was problematic.
I think that the thing, there was a lot of inspections done with the smoke testing and, and other ways to try to determine about that.
Right.
Like, you know, the some pump hookups, things like that, um.
I know years ago they had all that.
Yeah.
I remember.
Right, starting, you know, back in.
Right.
Nineties.
Yeah.
Um, do we wanna.
Pursue this?
Do we wanna, you know, spend those resources and, 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 uh, the cost of going, because this is pretty labor intensive, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta have at least two or three people out there doing this, and, and, uh.
I remember they had an outfit that come in and did the smoke testing and stuff like that.
TV cameras, didn't they do, was that in the water, or was that sewer?
They do a TV and everything in the village, I think.
Yeah.
And they're all summer.
But that's what I'm saying, is this a, just a, a regular occurring problem every spring that we're we've gotten overabundance, or when we get a heavy rain?
Yes, yeah.
Or, I mean, is it something we can deal with and, that we deal with every year, and it's just?
Well, I know you take some manholes, some places in the village where there's a manhole next to a water bottle, and soon as the water comes up, I'm sure, I know they have, uh, an insert on the inside and stuff like that that catches a lot of the sand that goes in the manhole, but I'm, I'm sure there's water that goes, goes in the manhole.
Right.
You know, I mean, can't very well stop it, I wouldn't think, unless you seal it up or something, tighten it. But.
When we built that plant, we were mandated by the D E C to keep, to keep groundwater out of the sewer plant. Now, I don't know how they enforce that, or what, it sounds to me like it's kind of a recurring labor maintenance
I mean.
Program that you have to go.
Yeah, I agree, I agree you're mandated, but that's almost an impossible thing.
I think we could, I think we could, you know, make every reasonable effort.
Yes, you can make, yeah, I can understand that, but you can't. There's no way you're gonna stop it.
Can't stop it, no.
No, no. I mean, if you went to every house in the village, I mean, somebody's got a some pump or a roof drain or.
Well, I think, uh, trustee Dart mentioned, uh, you've been talking to, uh, Chief Graves, and we're in the process of checking the, uh, manhole covers of the sanitary sewers to see that the stormwater is going in there. If, if we could get that done, you know, if you continue, I think that's gonna happen.
Yeah, it'll fix the work.
It's gonna help us all.
We talked about the I N I, but I, I wondered if.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, since you talked about the, you know, manhole covers. It, it all fits in.
We should recheck the Pfizer plant, too, because that was, that was a bone of contention, because they've got about six acres of roofs up there, and they used to go, you know, if I got this right, because the downspouts for the roof rainwater used to go in the sanitary sewer. But they had leaks in the air conditioning, glycol was going in there, so D E C said put it in the sanitary sewer.
Storm sewer.
No, from the storm sewer to the sanitary sewer. Because the glycol was leaking out of the roof air cond, I don't know if that's gone back and forth, but that's a lot of acres of water collection up there if it's going in the, in the sanitary sewers.
Yeah, I don't believe they put it in there.
I, I can't remember, they switched it from one to the other, I remember that.
Because they've got, they got people there all.
Oh, yeah, you wanna check that one out?
There's really nothing.
No, I don't want to, but.
There's really no. Right now, there's really no glycol up on the rooftop.
No, I know there isn't, I know there isn't, now, I'm sure if you're still draining the drain water in there or not.
Well, as, as part of the ongoing, uh, inspections are being done, I'm sure that, that's gonna, that'll be, it'll be looked at, so, that's, that's good. Okay, thank you, uh, administrator, uh, Mr. Arter, do you have anything?
I have a couple items, uh, first of all, last Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, Brian and myself met with a couple of disaster assistant representatives from the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services regarding, um, winter storm Stella. Uh, they're still in the preliminary stages, and gathering information from various counties throughout the state to find out if we will be able to make the, uh, threshold to see if they're getting FEMA money, so, they're still working on that. Um, the other thing is, I just wanna read a press release. Commencing June first, two thousand and seventeen, the village of Ross's Point Municipal Electric Department will again be make available to residential customers of the system. Where the two-year clear record of the utility, the opportunity to pay their electric charges by a budget billing arrangement. Based upon previous usage and projected per kilowatt hour costs, including supplemental power charge, and customers' annual electric expense will be estimated and paid in eleventh payments, with the remaining month that may used to represent that under payment service. The only wishing to participate in the program, contact our office. Uh, prior to May thirty-first, after that date, entry of the program will not be allowed until May two thousand and eighteen. All customers presently on the program will remain with a budget amount appearing on the top portion of their bill commencing with June bills. This program is open to all residential customers beneath the above requirements.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Palky, do I have any press thing?
No.
Go ahead. Go ahead, person, officer. Okay, uh, do I have any comments from public? All right, I'd like a motion to go into executive session, just to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
I'll make a motion, we're going to executive session.
One second?
Second.
Discussion, open the paper.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, uh, now I give a motion to adjourn the executive session while, uh, the.
Adjourn regular session.
Was it clear the room for that?
I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn and.
Second.
Second, discussion, open the paper.
Aye.